We're live, your worship.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for September fifth, twenty twenty three. Um, there's nobody on Zoom?
Nobody, your worship.
Okay. Okay, so we'll kick this off. I don't think we really have any amendments to the agenda unless there is. Any amendments, anybody?
No.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Second it.
Counsel Henshaw, thank you, Counsel Paquette. Many questions? Ball in favor? Carried. Uh, number two, adopt the draft minutes from the regular meeting of August twenty second, twenty twenty three.
I'll adopt the draft minutes from August twenty second, twenty twenty three.
I second that.
Counsel Burris, thank you, Counsel Henshaw. Any questions or comments?
Um, I do have two little ones, um. The, um, under the quarterly reports for the fire, um. There was a note there about when I was asking you whether or not we got paid for those, um. Ambulance assist calls. And you said you would find out, and I was wondering if you. Found that out. Cause I would love to know that for when we're, um, going over the response from the minister this weekend about the EMS revolution.
Uh, your worship, I honestly don't know because we have our council receivable staff was off last week. We were short staffed.
Anyway, we can know that by Friday.
I can ask, uh, our CFO tomorrow.
Cool, that'd be awesome. And then, um, the thing about the Francis Avenue lots, um, where it says. Um, we agreed that we would not respond. I just, I also may, might have just. Liked it for a second. I just don't recall that. I think we.
Counsel agreed that they did not respond to respondents. I don't know if that's the ultimate outcome of that.
I don't think so either. That's all.
Your worship of, if I remember correctly, you said you, we administered, I think, the, uh. From motion from Counselor Slager was that, um, administration responded with the ball diamonds and the, the response about. The Francis Avenue, that it was not transmitted, it was weak on government.
Oh, so it still would be a response, it just wouldn't be. For what?
Well, I think we agreed that there wasn't a response because it was really our place to stay.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, uh, administration put.
Okay, um, and I think that was it for me. Could you, oh, uh. Oh, yeah, no.
Any more questions? On favor? Ready? Okay, uh, motion to pay the open payables in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the open payables. What else? Open that?
Thank you, Counsel Henshaw, thank you, Counsel Paquette. Any questions?
I do have a question. It's not a big deal. I was just curious, but the, um, I can't really see the numbers, but ending in twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Signco.
One, that's like.
Signco. Signs?
Yeah.
So that is the sign.
Oh, okay.
What about?
That's right.
And then.
Are you done?
Yep.
Um, six one five one nine, just because it's such a round number.
Five, nine. Nine, six, one.
They amounted three thousand. Second one from.
Which one is that one time? Six one five zero nine? One nine, one nine. Towards the top, just have to go check it out.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry. That was the. That is the, that was the music for, uh, for Discovery Day, the band.
All the bands?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming the Yukon Circus Society as well?
That was, yeah, that was Discovery Day as well. Those were acts that were already booked prior to. As a case.
Gotcha, and. But, uh, six one five three zero.
Six one five two zero. Though, though contract?
Yeah.
Uh, that is, um, fuel.
Oh, okay.
Sir, sir, fuel supplier.
No, right, that's what for me.
Thomas already pointed out the ones I had.
Okay, on favor for. That was Henshaw, get. Good. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the CAO report.
Uh, so your worship, we had our meeting the past week regarding Francis, Francis. Tintina Way. Um, so that was done line locates already, Norco plans on having, uh, their materials will arrive, uh, early next week along with their equipment and they're gonna start work on Tintina. Which is very exciting to see that go ahead, so, um, it's gonna be. Engineers from WSP onsite, uh, all the way through to the end of construction season.
What's WSP?
Uh, so. They're the ones that did the design for the. Those, the blueprints in my office, the ones that did all that.
Okay.
Uh, for the work, so that's moving ahead, um. Fire chief's, uh, job posting post yesterday, we had, um. One, two, three, first, um. Three applications, um, we're gonna narrow it down to two for interviews, so, um, Tiffany's working on setting them up for hopefully next Monday. And, um. Uh, Jason Kearns got them on the fire department's gonna sit in on those interviews as well, myself. And we're very, we through that, um. Slow down time, uh, due to staffing, so Northern Light Center as of today is down to five days a week. Uh, with reduced hours. And, um, so that's till the end of the month, uh, swimming pool is same thing, I might have mentioned the boss being, but just to reinforce, because we are on the new schedule. Is we're open from three thirty to eight thirty, uh, Tuesday to Friday, and then all day Saturday. So, uh, so those things are moving ahead. Um, landfill, um, so I spoke about the council approved the public waste scrap off. Um, our application is in a gap pack right now. I'm looking on the response, so I just followed up with them on Friday. It's, uh, before their rep, hopefully we'll know something by next week or so. And, um. We advertised for a term position over at Parks America to cover up on the turn, um, on, um, a position that's off on medical. Um, resumes that came in were very poor and all come out of town, so, uh, we're looking at other solutions. We're actually in a. We've had conversations with the two summer students we had and to see if they'll work some days after school on Saturdays, so hopefully that. Give us the coverage, uh, to make it through till we know more about the short-term disability side of it. Uh, so that's moving ahead, um, we did have an incident on Friday with, um. The water utility supervisors truck catching on fire.
Okay.
Um, so. Turns out that they've been hauling around their tool bag inside the cap of the truck for a couple of weeks. And there was a torch in there on the bottle, uh, the bottle attached to the torch head, and somehow. Nobody touched it for three days, but, um. Stan parked the truck at the, at the water plant, gone inside and came back out and thought to himself, hmm, I didn't know I had tinted windows in my truck. And so he opened the door and luckily it didn't flash over. It had smothered itself out prior to him opening the door. And, uh, so burnt the headliner, backseat seatbelt and smoke damage throughout the cap of the truck, so, uh, I'm dealing with insurance right now. And, uh, so we're working through, uh, getting that appraisal done on getting that repair work done, but, um. So needless to say, there are being policy implemented that all tools would be in the back, uh, inside the cap and then all torch heads will be removed from bottles going forward. Um, but it's funny that rode around like that for two weeks and nobody touched anything. Just must have been jiggling. We still don't know how the striker went on, but maybe just when he hit the brakes, it might have just rolled perfectly, so it just clicked in another tool or something, but. Just lucky that it, um, that the windows were open, it snuck itself out, because otherwise if it would have had oxygen, the truck would have been gone, so, um. You know, probably five thousand dollars damage to the interior compared to us, who's a seventy thousand dollar truck. So anyways, so that was Friday, um. And, um. So we're moving ahead on those things, um, the landfill itself, if anybody hasn't been out there, I encourage people for a drive because, um, the recycling center is itself looks really well. Um, and, uh, the landfill, uh, comments from people that have been in there, uh, scrapularies in there, you know, and that scrap metal that gets thrown out of the style, but. And it's amazing how many those cubes of metal come out of that pile. There's no one ways to go, uh, so it's gonna be nice to get that out of there. Um, but there is, and there's been a change to the Yukon recycling, um, soft plastics are no longer accepted in the Yukon or. Even down south, so rigid, uh, plastics like water bottles is always still good and clamshell plastic and that kind of stuff is good. It's plastic bags. Uh, cell of vein, uh, but we're out, any of that is no longer accepted because the recyclers down in B C are no longer taking anything like that, so, um, unfortunately it's. Has to go in the trash, which is very unfortunate. We've made such significant strides on that. But, yeah, yeah, there's no, no market for it, and the last stuff that Yukon sent south, uh, ended up, I believe, going to. A landfill down there, so.
Alberta isn't an option.
Nobody's taking it cross-country. So, um, hopefully there will be changes down the road, but at this moment there isn't, so now. Um, so that's something that we're gonna start blogging on social media, um, so that way general public knows because people are still showing up at the. Laptop with it, so that people don't know, right?
Well, then can they just be directed to the landfill side?
Yeah. But the thing is, when people walk in with their bin full of recycled.
You should be like, there's a garbage can.
Yeah, that's, well, it's all going into the bag and that's just the element of it, but it's unfortunate. Um, so that's. Um, we're working on other applications for different funding pots as well, so, um. Climate, um, Climate Quest is at the Rex Center this week, um, it's through the federal government, it's, uh, free of charge. Uh, they're running all week. They started on Sunday, actually, but hopefully to the schools to get the students over there, but it's a really neat program. I want to get over there myself, but when you look at it, uh, Climate Quest. Um, they're traveling the north, uh, blocking. Interactive displays in the Rex Center, so it's really nice to see that going forward. Excited about the, we've been working with, uh, the architect and kitchen designers on the, uh, proposed renovations to the Rex Center. Um, so that will be coming forward to council at the October committee of all. For you guys to take a look at, um, I've had it looked at by our local cooks that use the kitchen all the time.
Yep.
And they're really excited to change this, and so, but the drawings and stuff will be coming to you guys throughout October, so.
So. I can wait till, as. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I thought there was one more thing I was sending forward. Awkward.
Fire conference.
Oh, the fire, yeah, the fire conference, the fire conference, um. Um, according to the ones that were here was very successful. Their numbers were really low. Um, and when they went to have their AGM vote, um, first round, they couldn't get anybody, they couldn't get enough people to form a board. So they took a break and then reconvened, and they were able to actually to form an executive. But they thought that this might have been the last fire chief's conference in the Yukon. Um, lots of money put out, um, lots of hotel rooms booked and not used. And those expenses ultimately were paid for by the fire marshal's office, so, um. And then they figured they're gonna have five teams for the extrication games on the set or training and games on Saturday. Uh, there was two, and then Watson Lake, uh, our Watson Lake members put in, there's three, three of our department participated, um. But, yeah, numbers were extremely low, but the ones that were here had, uh, a good time. They made use of the, our facilities. Um, actually even took part in disco.
Cool.
So, yeah, so, um, they, they all, they, they've seen the Northern Light Center, Bull and Curran, I mean, in fire hall, praying room. All that stuff, sort of the goodness, um. Must a shout out to BJ Storming, as they did all the setup. And donation of the cards and the cleanup after, so huge, huge donation, really, from the community, so. Um, and then the other thing that we're working on, and we have a implementation meeting tomorrow is. Is, um. We're applying, I've. When A Y C A G M was here, I met with, uh, the director of infrastructure development branch. And he told us, talked to me about, um, COVID HVAC money.
Okay.
So we, I put an application in, and so tomorrow is the kickoff meeting here in town with the engineer, with associated engineering. And we're looking at replacing all the HVAC in the administration building, the Northern Light Center and the Rec Center. Uh, that would all thunder, fall under the ISIP HVAC or COVID money. Um, so we'll see how that plays out. All the work has to be completed by, I think, March of twenty twenty. No, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, so there, it, there's, it's a short timeframe when you're doing with design and engineering and installation, but, um, we think it's, uh, achievable. So that's moving ahead, and then, um, I did receive correspondence from Aaron Labonte about Fire Smart Program Funding. Um. So far, um, I haven't, she says that it's open for application now and stuff. But I haven't been able to find other that's available for First Nation communities, not for community communities, uh, so, and as we're still chasing that, but. Um, Fire Smart had been done by the municipality or through the municipality and the firefighters association. Um, when I first started in community, and then it became an issue with trying to find contractors that actually would do the work. And then that's when the art First Nation and all them started bidding and taking on that kind of work, so, um, we're still gonna chase it, I just, um. It's hard when there's no contractors that are willing to take on that type of chainsaw work for the winter. But the money, we'll look at it. If the money's there, we'll definitely chase it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's all I have for tonight, for now.
That's great. Thank you for all that.
Oh, and I should say one thing. I am starting holidays next week and Shannon's.
Okay.
For the record.
And you're off from next week till?
When I come back.
Thanks.
October sixteenth.
Okay, good. Enjoy your holiday.
Thank you.
Well deserved. All right, uh, next on our agenda, we have bylaw number ninety-nine dash seventeen being the volunteer fire department bylaw. I hope everybody's had a quick chance to look it over, um.
Wait, can I ask? Oh, sorry, can I just ask whose notes those are?
These notes, your worship, were their accumulation of, uh, our former fire chief and, um, I think six or seven members of the fire department sat down and went over it. Um, your worship, I've gone through it, there's a few areas that, um. I don't agree with all the recommendations, just from regular story side.
Can you tell if the ones those are?
Sure, so on, so under number five, uh. It says the chief shall be the executive officer of the fire department, but shall be subject, subject to orders. Of the, uh, of the council or chief administrative officer is the way it's worded now, and they, they wanted to change to be through with the chief administrative officer. Um, I. It, yeah, it, I guess the way through means the way they're looking at it is that if council has anything to say about the fire department, it has to come through me.
Doesn't that make sense?
It, it does in some ways, but when I originally read it, it. It almost sounded like, um. Well, I know why I read it wrong. It said counsel for the chief administrative officer, the way the letters are.
Oh.
I screamed, it looked like four.
So I have a question while we're on that paragraph, um, where it says Moynes, is it supposed to be Monies? I just. Unless it's a word that I've never heard of before.
Yeah, it's Monies, yes.
Okay.
Um, and then. Um, I agree with the standard operating guidelines, our recorded procedures, um. Some places where they have the changing and where it talks about the next level or who will be in charge, I think it could be, um. Or, or delegates.
What, are you talking about sixteen where it says as for the lo-? Level of service? Oh, sorry, nevermind, sorry.
I'm talking about the twelve, yeah, captains shall be the next ranks to the deputy chief. They shall be responsible for blah, 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 blah. Um, the current captains don't want to be in charge of discipline, training and efficiency and operation of the department. Um, so I do get that, it really, those, those roles should fall on the chief, right, because he's a full-time person.
But so it says here, like they're proposing. In. If there's ever a time where both the chief and the deputy were missing, that then a captain would need to step up to.
Yes.
Take care of that role.
Yes.
Doesn't that?
Yeah, it should be, I think, I think that could be cleared up as we put, you know, the chief or delegate, and then that rank encapsulates all that.
Oh.
Or the single, or the senior ranking member of the fire department.
Members, yeah.
So I think there can be some housekeeping, keeping, but these were just, this was just brought forward as areas that they thought there could be. Some changes made, so you'll see a lot of cross-stuff areas, right?
Um. For sixteen, I just have a question mark there, because I just wasn't sure what. They meant by that as for a level of service provided, because it says that they'll be provided with gear. Does that mean just? Based on whatever your job is?
Yes.
You would have. Equipment suitable for that job?
Yeah, because we're mandated, we're mandated in, uh, under occupational health and safety to provide the proper, the proper P D E. For the jobs and the training that the people.
For sure, it was just their note on the site, it says for level of service provided, so I just wanted to make sure that I knew what they were talking about there.
Could be, um, like if we're fighting grass fires, they have grass fighting gear, which council, or if it's structural, then they have their bunker gear or. Yeah, that's up, right, so depending on the type, uh, cer- uh, activity that they.
Would that really be determined by council, though? Because that's kinda, yeah.
That's not council.
Yeah.
So that's like I said, there needs, this was just the things they pointed out.
Yeah.
And I think council has feedback, um, administration will do a rewrite of it to bring back the council.
Sure.
I mean, I'm not against really anything that they pointed out, and obviously they know a lot more about this.
That's the thing, yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, those were my only two questions that I had marked on that one copy. I had more things marked on. Our bylaw, which is actually for like fire operations, um, of our like. As a department of the town rather than the, because that's a bylaw for the volunteer fire department, that's just for the, that organization. And then, so I know a conversation we were having earlier was whether or not we would combine these two bylaws, there's one for the volunteer fire department, then there's one just for like the fire department, um.
Was a peccary.
Yeah, fire and life safety bylaw, fire protection and life safety bylaw. I, the more that I read these, I think that they should be separate. I don't know if you guys agree with that or not. Just because they do seem completely different, unless it was just like. Otherwise it's gonna be super long for starters. I don't know, they just seem. Like two separate things, kind of.
I think number twenty-six as well, um, the part where it says.
Which one you want? Sorry, this one?
Um, the.
Volunteer?
Protect.
Okay.
Yeah, the volunteer fire department. Number twenty-six, it says every response initiates from the hall. Every member working. It says every turn here, they wanna, they wanna have it, every, every member initiates from the hall. To wear full-time protective clothing. Sometimes what happens is, if a member is already out at, say, Upper Lee Yard. Or let's say is the airport as an example, because, uh, there's firefighters, there's a couple of them, actually. And there's a fire out at, say, the ski hill, they're not gonna drive all the way to the hall, put on their gear. To go there, and they'll be like, I'll meet you at the ski hill while you're at the hall, throw my boots, throw my jacket in the truck. And bring your boots and jacket there, so, so you can get there quickly. Because there else you're waiting extra minutes for the person to drive in, then drive out, so I think twenty-six being his.
But isn't that, that brings about some liabilities, if you don't get all your suits and you have members showing up at a random time, you want to show up as a group. With your team, and I don't know, I, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Well, and the, the reason it was put in there was due to, uh, occupational health and safety, because we have to ensure that. The members do have all their personal protective gear.
Yeah.
And, um, sometimes where that was brought forward, I agree with Counsel Slager, because when I was on the fire department, we did have somebody throw our stuff in and, and bring it. Um, but this was brought forward because of the fact that our numbers have been so, so low, that if we don't know people are, or who's coming and going, we might not have enough. People to roll from the hall for the response, and so, um, it's, it's down to the personal protection stuff, so we can, we can word that.
So I could just word it differently, because that is sometimes the best option, because you're on the radio and you're like, hey, you know I'm coming. I'll be there. And just grab my gear, because it's gonna cost us, you know, every minute. You know, when a fire is first starting, uh, counts, right, so if you can shave six minutes off a fire. It's the difference between saving it. Or, uh, having a concrete foundation. So if we could word it differently, I'd be on board with that.
Twenty-six. Okay.
Because.
Yep.
Because everyone's starting from there makes no sense sometimes, like sometimes you have to just say, hey, I'll be there, throw my gear in there. Because if you don't know who's coming or who's, you wouldn't know who's geared to throw in. Well, you're throwing your random gear in there.
I guess the other side of it too is a lot of, everybody's using the pagers now, like pages on the phone, they're not using the radio, so there, there is that lack of communication as well, right? So. It's, yeah.
Can be looked at.
Because I went to a fire call today, and the only person that was on the radio with dispatch was myself, nobody else was on the radio. So then we had five members show up at the hall.
Hmm.
So. You know, it's, it's, yeah, I guess we just gotta look at how we word that, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I just, in some case, in, in the very odd case, it makes sense, yeah.
And I guess this, this is the feedback from the membership, is I guess is what I want to say as well.
Okay, thanks, Counsel.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I'm not really about that section. I guess I would like to see those thing, all the recommendations, I guess kind of fit into there and then review it again.
Sure.
Um. Are, you can look at the other.
Other protective services one, sure.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to, uh, add to Lawrence's comment about it, combining it, it might complicate to have two separate ones, because it kinda. Or to put into one. Now, it, it does seem like a lot, and it might simplify it for, uh, volunteer firefighters, knowing that, you know, this separate is a little bit different for themselves than it is for the entirety, right? I mean, it'll be good to know it all, but. I.
Yeah.
Or even combine them into two, and you can do, you know, one protective services subsections or something along those lines. But to delineate the two, I think is, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know that before we actually even started looking at this, I was leaning towards like, maybe should we combine, so that like, why would we have two? But like, like I said, the more I.
Look into it.
View them, the more I think that they should be separate.
Good.
Um, there were just some, like, I don't know how. Much of our rewrite is gonna happen on this one. There were just some things that I, either I questioned on or, um.
Well, this one, we have, did we do a first reading for this?
No, this is just going forward to your branch.
So we'll have to, first reading for change if we want to put it out to the public, right, so.
Right.
But I mean, it's public.
So we are only doing this one?
Yeah, but if we're gonna do changes, we'll.
Are we reviewing this one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The ninety-nine.
Do you want to hear the nothing, or should? Do you want to hear the nothing or should I give this for?
Just, yeah, now's good.
Um. There were just like wording things to like. Like if you were changing certain wording in this one, I feel like it should also change in this one. Um, there was like, um. Actually, I don't know if it's a deal, but number four and five, where it says like, um, may appoint a designate or. Uh, sorry, may appoint or designate other officers to act as the fire chief on his or her behalf. Um. But we have specific people that that would be delegated to, and I'm wondering if that should be like. You know, outlined in there, like deputy or captains or whatever. And then um section nine, where it says fire chief, deputy chief, senior captain, captain. In the one, um, in the volunteer one, it says that there are four captains. So I'm wondering if that. Like, does it just skip the other two captains? In that rank structure?
Yeah, worship, that's just the rank structure doesn't.
Okay, it's not.
Because it just says firefighter where we have twenty-four in total.
Okay. And then the one underneath where um the jurisdiction of the fire department, um, where? Um, we have written agreements between the town and other local government for providing the service of firefighting services or. Well, whatever outside of town boundaries. So does that happen right now?
Yes, we have the fire marshals offices.
And that happens before. Like there's a response to something, because I read or.
Oh, it's a, it's a blanket M O U that we've signed for five years. It's actually expiring coming up the end of October, I believe. Um, which is, we're working on the renewal of it right now, so.
Um, because we're talking about the other bylaw, which is not on the agenda, and we have the policy as well, we might as well bring that up as well, can we?
Sorry?
Well, there's ninety-nine dash seventeen, which is on the agenda. And then this one here is a different one altogether. It was in the package, but it's not on the agen- agenda, but the policy as well.
This was just here, Cam was saying this was just here for reference. I. Honestly thought you were reviewing both, so I made notes on both.
Okay.
But we can talk about another.
Well, the policy as well, um. Is like we're uh for training and education, we don't even pay minimum wage. The fifteen dollars. Uh, per practice session per firefighter, be there for two hours, works out to be. Seven fifty.
I think that we already decided to review those, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah.
But. If you're doing it, I'm gonna do it. Yes, no, no question.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I mean, it's in the package there, so it's really quick, like the level one status, all I'm asking there is that we match uh white horses level one. Uh, call like what they pay their firefighters.
It's a, or we don't know.
Uh, I think it's closer to like twenty-eight, maybe thirty.
Practice sessions. Your worship, I didn't meet with the fire marshal when he was down.
Yep.
And uh they're taking a comprehensive review of um. Wage structure in all the halls that they're responsible for, so they would like to. Meet with us, Dawson and White Horse, to do a terrible, so that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, so you go to, go to all, you go to a fire call, risk your life for twenty bucks an hour.
I don't think it's the money, though.
It never is, but it helps.
Yeah, well, good. But yeah, that's definitely something we can review, but I I don't think this is the time and plot, like this isn't the day, right? So we won't make a decision on it, but we'll have administration draw something up for us when we do make a decision on this and we can confirm it. Probably next on, we can even ask administration to provide some mock-up of what these. Or redo this volunteer fire department bylaw with the amendments that are presented and some changes to the wage structure and the policy. And then we can make a decision on it next meeting.
I think we separate, we separate the two though, like the.
Well.
Protection and.
If we could see what the uh contradicting. Statements between both bylaws would be so we know what we're looking for, then it would be a little easier.
There's, your worship in there is some. References in the life protection one that refer to the other one, so you have to make sure the wording is the same.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
I don't care.
Said that the fire marshal office is gonna be reviewing that and we're a part of that as well, so that's cool.
Okay.
So I guess your worship, we would need a date. Would you like a table two? Would it be the October committee that will be meeting for, because it's for discussion? And we could bring the rest of them forward at the same time?
Well, we've only done the first reading, so we could see the changes and make second reading. Eh, for the first regular meeting in October?
So that would be the meeting on uh the schedule on the nineteenth of June, so.
Yeah, some other way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know when you go, when you will be meeting with the fire marshal? Do you know on that?
I don't, I don't.
Okay. Eight. The seventeenth?
It's September. Or October.
I'm sorry, I thought you just said October.
October we were referring to.
Yeah, seventeen.
Right. And so our next, next regular meeting.
And so our policy for being there is our allotment and funds would just, we need to find out, we just match white horse, so we see.
That's what they're.
Yeah, if you don't, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Okay. So for October seventeenth, that's.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Particularly.
So your worship, would you want the life safety bylaw to come forward at the, on your next meeting on the twenty-second? For, uh, so you have first reading on it, so we can open it up for discussion.
For changes, yes, we might as well because so we can um change those contradictory statements.
So that would be on the September nineteenth.
Okay, that's regular, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And that's for which one, sir?
That's for the life safety.
Yeah.
So that way it's good for reviews.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Moving along, so next.
Need a, need a motion or we just talked about it?
We just asked the administration to do that to provide for us.
Okay.
Need a motion for it. Provide it to us for those meetings. It's in the minutes. Okay. Okay. Community meeting. So last meeting we had, which was uh August twenty-second, I believe, was it? We discussed the uh potential of a meeting to happen for um concerned citizens, Watson Lake. Um, we discussed the idea of September sixth. Um, we've had some difficulties creating that meeting via by a agenda and a moderator. Don't want to host a meeting that we're. You know, not prepared for or not, uh, you know. Skilled enough to handle, because I believe it'll be a difficult conversation. There's some people that are very passionate about it, so we want to find the right people to manage that situation, so. Uh, that being said, no, uh. People still want to see that happen. Um, what? What does that look like? When does that? Think we can have that happen?
Did you reable to contact either of the people that I recommended?
I did not.
Hmm. Okay.
So I mean, it can be a team effort for us to try and get this to happen, so um if you guys want us to continue doing this, we'll look for a moderator, um. What kind of dates look good and what kind of agenda do you want to have? What's, what, what do you feel like we should do here?
Well, I was hoping that one of the key participants of the um. Concerned citizens would be here, um, just so we can maybe get some feedback on that. Um, so. I'm not really sure as far the agen- agenda content rate this second, um. I will make myself available any day, so.
Okay. The difficulty I'm having with this meeting is the agenda, like what, what are we going to discuss? What are we gonna present to the community to have a conversation about? Because we can't. Unless we're just having an open forum where we want to come and listen and have people s- s- tell us what they want to say about. Next.
I think that there needs to be some of that for sure. I think that we still should declare a health and safety emergency. In my opinion. That was, that was the original goal of the meeting to begin with. It wasn't even really to have a. Whatever, it just kind of like morphed into that over time, but I think that that should be like the. I don't know.
Ultimate goal.
Ultimate, well, ultimate, but like one of the main, main points, I think that we should declare that. Um, I think that. Um, we need to be inviting the people that need to hear the stuff that these people have to say.
Okay.
Because it can't always, I mean, obviously, like, we can say it a million times, but it can't always just be coming from us and um. Yeah, I mean, I have a list of people I think we should invite.
Okay, okay, so it'll, it'll take a little bit of work, so if, if there's people that want to take on certain aspects of this meeting, that'd be great. I mean, if you. Council or you want to try and nail down, I guess the other thing is we have to pay a moderator. So what is that gonna, how much is that gonna cost? They're also gonna want to know what. They're hosting and how it's gonna be hosted, so we have to actually decide how that, what that looks like. So. And with their councils we're ready to spend money on a moderator, I don't know exactly how much that's gonna be. Right?
I disagree with uh that we're gonna uh state our emergency.
It's not a state of emergency. The health and safety emergency.
Okay, I disagree that we're in a health and safety emergency, um. I don't know where you're getting your statistics from to back that statement like that, other than just the, you know, social feeling of the community. Um, however, Sergeant Cropper did provide us with. Stat- statistics that demonstrated that crime in Watson Lake is actually lower than it has been in the past ten years. It's just because of various social media. Uh, outlets that are making things more sensationalized and a lot of it. Is not even by our own citizens. There, there is from people that have just been passing through that have decided to. Commit various crimes. Some of them, yes, there, there are people that are here, but I still don't think it constitutes. A crisis. Counsel us to declare such a crisis.
So. But we're all somewhat on the fence about how, we want to have the meeting for the community, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
You can ask the attendees if they want to declare a health and safety emergency.
That's fair. Right?
You can say that that's the purpose of the meeting.
That'll be the, that'll be the discussion.
There you go.
Whether it's a, it, the, the title will be health and safety. Right? And we'll ask whether or not the community feels that it is a heightened level and whether or not this needs to be. You know. Exposed and highlighted, right?
We should all be exposed.
Of course. So I guess the real question is, does council want to spend money on a moderator?
I guess it depends how much and it depends whether or not, you know, like a cou- couple of people that I recommended or whatever, obviously, are people that do it for money and. Um, they obvi- I think do different levels of whatever, like they can just come and like do your meeting, but then do we want to report after? Do we want them to do any background research? Like, there's a bunch of other stuff that I think. Depends what you want. Um, like if we just want them to come there and make sure that people aren't like.
Killing each other.
Jumping over each other. I mean, I could probably do it. I mean, I don't want to, but, and probably not appropriate, but, um. Perhaps you could find somebody local that might, can just do that if that's all we want, but if we want something a little bit more, um. I don't know, like if we want to file a report or something, um. Get somebody to take notes and whatever, then maybe that's a different, different story, um. But again, it depends how much it costs. I think if we have a budget to hire somebody, then, you know, if it's reasonable, then. Let's do it, but um if it's. I don't know, depends.
Could you possibly take on finding us a moderator? And the, and we can have a meeting on whether or not we.
I'm not committing to that now. I am, I will assist.
Sure. Okay, well, I need to have, okay, we can't, we're, we can't talk about it all night long, so we will endeavor to find the right person to host this meeting and. Somehow come up with a topic of conversation, because I really feel like people will get lost in the moment. And we'll circle about to all sorts of problems that. The community is facing. We want it to be focused on one topic, which is health and safety. And we want it to be constructive, you know, like if we are gonna find somebody and we're gonna pay some money. Then it has to have an ultimate goal for the taxpayers. Right? We're not gonna spend money on nothing. Right?
Where exactly is that money gonna come from if we do? Pay for somebody to moderate?
Well, I guess it depends on ultimately how much it's gonna cost and it would come from our council. And council, I think we have like a ten thousand dollar budget.
Your worship, we have professional services budget under description. Um, yeah, but ultimately, your worship, whoever you're gonna get as a moderator is gonna want an agenda, because nobody's gonna. Moderate a meeting, they don't know.
What they're talking about.
Topics are and how, what to keep people in mind.
But someone that A Y C can help with them, you know?
No, they don't, that's, they're real close. They can point you towards people that do it for a living, which there's already been some names passed to me, and hence is one son.
Honor and the next.
Gender number seven. Um, that specializes in that type of things. Uh, there's, there's all kinds out there, depends on what council wants.
After attending the last community meeting, there was a general consensus of other than learning about how scan worked. That it was kind of a waste of time. And end of the day. Uh, whether it's. Drugs, drinking, smoking, whatever sort of addiction you're dealing with, somebody coming along and saying, hey, you know, you should really not do that. Oh, well, thank you for telling me. I'm gonna stop right now. It doesn't work like that. Right? There's the, there's, it goes far deeper than, than just our community, right? Like on some level, like you could, there's things you can do to help. Uh, to show support, for sure. But just saying doubtful not does not work.
I shall not what? I'm sorry, I'm gonna call you. What a great saying would not to do.
This, okay, so if you want.
We're just creating a forum for people to voice what they feel is important. We're not saying don't do anything.
Well, that's what's gonna come up at the meeting, when people are gonna say, well, we need to stop these people from getting all whacked out on various drugs and. Walk around and committing random acts of violence. Well. You know, uh, other than if you're behaving and your friends are behaving. Like I, like I just don't know how to stop those random acts of violence, counselor and drug. I don't, that's, that's what I have issue with and that's what I have, just. I, I just wonder as. I don't have a meeting for the sake of just having a meeting, also the moderator or whoever, you know what I mean? Because i- it's, it's fruitless, it's pointless, it's directionless and I, and as. As worship has pointed out, I don't want, doesn't want to go to a meeting just for the sake of showing up to say we had a meeting about something. There needs to be. Uh, a point. What would you like to happen there?
I understand that we need to, we need, the concerned citizens want something to happen. They want to see some action, they want to be heard. Right? And that's why we initially started this process and I don't disagree. We have to be there so they can be heard. I just, we need to just have two points. What are the two points of the agenda? Health and safety, health and safety initiative will say one, and what would the second one be? Scan processes or what that looks like or discussion around it?
Sure.
Okay, so we can have an agenda with those two topics. And then we can try and ask a moderator to handle those two. The health and safety would have to be, um, you know, crime-related. And we'll try and focus on those two things. Right? Comment?
Um, I'm just saying like that was a pretty big part of the conversation over there was um the fighting crime aspect of it. So there is a proper conversation around that.
Right.
You know.
Health and safety.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I'm just saying that's not totally out of nowhere.
And then we can bring in scan to have a discussion about.
Like somebody actually from scan though, like it's not just somebody who read about it on the internet. I mean, I appreciate her thinking there, she's the only person who knew anything about that.
And then the third would be maybe. The introduction of the House of Wolf Association, associates.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Okay. Okay, and maybe if we can have them be there, or a member of their group to be there for that meeting. They can tell everybody what they can provide and how the funding works, good.
And then also, it's not gonna be very effective, we don't, I'm assuming we're inviting, uh, Eludana. Yeah.
Yes. So in order to get. All of that together, it will take some time. Um, after speaking with Gina from House of Wolf Associates, who is number seven on our agenda. I have a little letter from her, kind of foregoing over, uh, brief. Idea of what they can do, we should try and combine that to an entire, an entire thing for the community. So it turns, it comes, it starts with being heard, people allowing them to have a conversation about the health and safety. Scan, what scan can do, House of Wolf Associates being able to show them what can happen and. What can happen going forward, something constructive, something long term, not something that's just today and only today. Work?
I agree, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to reach out to all those things, and it's gonna take some time. So, in the meantime, how about we reach out to the concerned citizens, we'll write a statement letter, even in the next forty-eight hours. Um, saying that we are working on things, we heard what was said at these group meetings. We want to make something happen, here's our plan, and we will do it as soon as everybody's available. Please stay tuned, please be aware, but that's the best we can do, we can't be anything rash in the media, so it might take. For that to happen.
But I think it's important to get everybody.
Together, I think it should be a group thing instead of trying to rush into it next week.
I don't wanna pick a date right now.
Sorry?
Is that all, I don't wanna pick a date right now.
No, that we don't have to pick a date, we can reach out to all these groups and find a moderator to host that whole event. We can make an event happen, make it big, make it heard, bring it all together. Okay, so we'll, I'll talk to Tiffany, we'll try and draft a letter, like a statement piece. Regarding what was gonna be tomorrow and tell them what our plan is going forward. Good, good.
I like it.
Okay, great. Everybody good?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, okay, so next on the agenda is number seven, the House of Wolf Associates, and she provided us with. A little synopsis of what they can do, I'm just gonna read it out loud for the public. Uh, House and Wolf Associates specialize in social justice, infrastructure design. That is custom responsive, trauma informed, and sensitive to your community's needs. Social, social justice infrastructure refers to the network of in-house programs that address integrational trauma. As the root cause of crime and criminality. Each community, each community will have the answers to its own set of problems, the community must be empowered, its voice amplified. And supported in its pursuit of healthy interrelationships on the path to decolonization. What this means is that you may not end up with the program you saw when you decided to reach out, however. House of Wolf Associates will take all necessary measures to address whatever symptoms of disorder you are hoping to curb. We will do so in a way that is much more effective than picking up pre-canned option from a shelf. As a one-size-fits-all, so, all solutions, and our experience fits almost no one. If they had models implemented to the, to date by traditional legal enforcement agencies would have been. A resounding success across the north. Common concerns for indigenous communities, integrational trauma. No, I'm sorry, thank you, intergenerational trauma, thank you, substance abuse. Gang activity, bootlegging, drug trafficking. Social justice infrastructure deliverables, so community risk and protective factor analysis. Crime prevention through environmental design, a five-year strategic plan development. Program design, program recommendation and implementation. And what they do, we are a team of individual individuals who recognize your concerns and work to innovate. Attainable ways in which to improve safety in indigenous communities nationwide. Through proactive social infrastructure development and assistance. Social infrastructure development encompasses all that we do here at the House of Wolf. Focusing on community safety and empowering First Nations, what tools do we have to meet your needs? We are connected to an expansive network of professionals in various sectors of the government. Law enforcement and social services who work with us in indigenous communities via the frame, framework we propose to enable change. We liaise between your community and various stakeholders and are committed to a role of direct support for you. And how do we take the next step? We would love to help by presenting a proposal to members of your community, but want to leave the ball in our court. We are eager to show evidence of the success of our work to date, and will be happy to share. That with your community with an official invitation. I think that it would be an opportunity to work with L F N in a capacity that they would like to see happen. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to take that with whatever, with the concerned citizens' concerns. And the approach that Wolf House can offer, I think it would bring our community together.
I'm gonna read it.
See what need, like, if you go on their website, it's, it's sort of neat what they have done in my Tesla. Car cross, white horses, a couple other smaller communities, I was watching videos, they had posted what they've done, and it's pretty, pretty cool.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So you should. For the record, House of Wolf is actually doing a proposal for us right now, so that can be presented to council. So that way you can go with financial implement, implications, but I also wrote, uh, reached out to. UConn government, because in, um, in their, um. Their release on August twenty-third, where they talk about the forty-three steps in their, um. To deal with the crisis right now in the territory, uh, under their community, their title of community safety and wellbeing. One is to provide UConn First Nation governments and local governments to provide, to in. To provide funding to UConn governments, UConn First Nation governments and local governments to increase understanding of the communities. Community specific and territory-wide community safety issues, needs and priorities, and to explore. Options for long-term solutions to implement, identify priorities, so that feeds right in.
That's like a perfect, because that's what their company does.
Yes, and then number two, under that list of their things that they put out in their report, was develop a short. Term funding streams to support non-governmental organizations. And community groups to implement their own responses to safety and wellbeing issues, so that hits the nail. Right on the head for everything's been brought forward to us, so I haven't got a response, our, uh, we all are, many affairs. Uh, liaison for the council is looking into it.
My guess, only question was, and I asked Christopher this a while ago, was that it just seemed like this was, um. Geared towards First Nation governments all over for the most part, but. Um, it sounds like they also willing to work with the municipality.
Yes, they, they, so, uh, when we met with, um, Gina, um, I, I worked with Gina. Gina many years ago, but, um. They're actually doing stuff in Ontario and all across Canada right now, so it's. Their primary, when they started their, because they're UConn based, they, they started with one lump done.
Right.
And then they rolled out from there and then developed and are approaching it from outside of the First Nation lands as well.
Legislation gives us an opportunity to maybe work with. Well, and the thing, the Wolf and Associates said that they would reach out to them personally.
Yeah.
And saying that, you know, the town of Watson Lake is interested in this, and that they would be willing to work with you.
Yeah.
If you wanna take it on.
And that's good.
Yeah.
And then. There were a scenario where they weren't interested, we could still proceed.
Hundred percent.
You know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that'd be great, I, I, when we spoke with her, she, her availability was very limited, and it seemed like it was gonna be a while before she could. Uh, be here for. The initial, like, meeting, meet the group, meet community, it seemed like about a month or so away, so. If we were gonna have them as part of this meeting, it would take some time, but.
I think it's a part of you.
I do too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Custom would also, like, you're not reinventing the wheel, you're not having a meeting, and then another meeting to have everything repeated over and over.
Right.
Right, it's being captured and implemented or developed or planned, right, can we get it on?
Yes.
And also gives us time to look for that funding that you were talking about, wait for some of that to, to come in.
Okay. Okay, is there any more comments about the, uh, two topics?
No.
Okay, okay, so we'll move right along. Uh, bylaw number ten dash thirteen, being the general maintenance bylaw. Comments, questions, go ahead.
So your words, but this was brought forward as, um, council made the motion that they wanted to start seeing bylaws for updating that were out of date. Um, this one is always one that seems to be the one, one contention in town when there's properties that need attention and everything. So, as you'll see in, uh, document eight, it, it's sort of the preamble, because the acts no longer apply, that are municipal act has been changed. Uh, definitions need to be adjusted, uh, penalties, uh, need to be looked at in general, the bylaws really out of date. And, uh, so it needs to be looked at, so, so before you is, um. Our bylaw, which would be twenty-ten dash thirteen, and then there was a amendment done to it in twenty-eleven. Zero nine, and then I provided counsel with two examples of, uh, very well-written. Uh, I lost it, covered the same topic, um, one is from the city yellow knife, and the other one is from Canora, Ontario.
Canora was a good one, I went through that one actually, clearly, because it was just well-written.
I liked some parts of the yellow knife one, because it felt more northern in focus, like, like.
I like what it's called.
That.
And unsightly land by law.
But it didn't have, like, if your sunflower was this high, you had to trim it down to there, you know, like, there's some things that are just, like, too specific, and I feel that, like. You know.
No, some of it was like, yeah.
It's, and even some of them are a little much, even the, like, if you, like, I'm not giving, this isn't, isn't an exact example. But it had one in here where it was like, uh, five thousand dollar fine or six months in jail, and it was like, what? And, uh, it did say six months in jail in one spot, and then there's another. What was it? Yeah, like.
So, the notes on here, on, these are from Mike's notes.
Uh, that, the, on number eight.
The little grid, yeah.
Down the grid, oh yes, on the grid, that is the, that is the stuff that was Mike Proster former.
Um, but he mentions that in there, that he said the punishments seem kind of harsh.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, but I mean, maybe that's the point, like, maintain your, uh.
Well, six months. I know, I know, I know, it just. Seems a little bit much.
Right, like, any personal violence provisions, this law commits an offense punishable by summary conviction and is liable to a fine not exceeding. Five thousand dollars or to imprisonment for six months. Or to both, where proceedings or commands pursuant to the summary convictions provisions of the Criminal Court of Canada, like, holy, guy go like.
Going downtown.
Put in a lawn in my new house, dog. Come over there measuring it.
Yes, no, for sure, your worship, that, those, those fines and stuff, that's the way it was written at the time. And that's the wording under the summary conviction act, so that's where that was, I'm gonna get it all from.
Okay, that just seemed a little, you know, because a lot of it seemed to be about, like, vehicles parked in your yard that don't work. Um, or.
What are you talking about, Thomas?
Um. Record, means any motor vehicle which is not validly registered and licensed in accordance with the Motor Vehicles Act or. Any amendments there too, or capable of movement under its own power, right, so like. If you got a parts truck. And, uh, someone wanted to get, like, cranky with you, they could be like, whoa, he's got a parts truck there.
Well, is it possible to get Connie to do a write-up on it, like, like, not a write-up, but like, just have her opinions. On some of this stuff, just because she deals with it every day.
Like, I could understanding, I could understand, like, having. Like, I got a spare wood truck, but it runs, it's just not insured, because why insure two wood trucks, it's like, it's a backup truck.
Oh, that's right, I just, I just like to get her opinion, because she looks at it every, every day.
It would not, I mean, under that thing there, it wouldn't qualify, because it does have its own power, you can start it. I think you need some of this, I think.
No, for sure.
But it. It also has to reflect. Um. Has to reflect the culture of the community, is what I wanna say.
But, yeah, um, yes, but it's also gonna be enforced.
No, that's right, that's right, it, this has to make sense for who's doing the enforcing, really, like. Sorry about that, um.
And it also has to tie into the life safety bylaw as well, because there's parts of that.
We haven't done a first reading on this bylaw yet.
It hasn't worshiped, but it's just one that's brought forward for discussion, and if there's a motion that council deems that it needs to be reviewed or wants to review it. Then we'll bring it for first meeting at the next meeting.
Sure, I'm in agreement with reviewing it, and I'm just, um. Curious what your opinion is on this, just given the fact that the two samples that you provided are like. Ten pages long or whatever, and ours is like three, so like, are we missing a bunch of stuff?
Well.
In your opinion, there's.
You have, you also have to look at it, Canora, Canora, Ontario is a resort.
We probably don't even think about bonding water and stuff, yeah.
There's a lot of stuff, it's, it's a totally different environment, and Yellow Knife is another beast of its own, right? Because if, I'm sure if we compared White Horse's bylaw, it would be long compared to ours as well.
Right.
So I think what we need to do is look at ours, and then it can choose. What we feel is applicable from these other ones, that.
Like, have you looked at, um, like Dawson, or?
I have.
Like, I don't know, or just.
When, when we had Mike do the review, um, most of the municipalities are the same vote as us, archaic.
I see.
Bylaws.
Yeah, so what would the, the process be now? We would do first reading, uh, on, on the nineteenth, and then. Changes would be made, we would give you the changes then?
Um, it would be first reading on the nineteenth, and then it would, um, once you've had that discussion, then I would send it to bylaw for feedback. And then we would try to bring it back to October.
And then, and then, okay.
And knowing that it's coming, if there's changes that you wanna see administration put in, you can put it on that meeting.
On side of that.
Okay, so we'll just request admin, bring it to the next meeting, and we'll open it up for. Yeah, okay. Okay. Uh, next, we're on to the counselor open forum. Uh, counselor forget.
Anything at the moment, I left my book at home, so.
Oh, okay, council Brutus? The only thing I had was, I was an aspect fire chief in your comment on that. That's good.
Um.
Counsel Slater?
Oh.
Uh, we were already agreed to update our council, uh. No, sorry, I want, I'm still getting my notes.
I actually do have one, but I'll wait to.
No, as long as we're looking at the updating the firefighter policy, give them. What White Horse does, a map with that, or a big sign.
Okay, council get.
I'm a professional at stop signs, so some of them are control, and you can hardly see them, and then some places. There aren't any, which I'm not sure if that's our responsibility or somebody else's, so when First Casca joins onto the dump road. There's no stop sign, there's no kneel sign, there's no sign there at all, is that our responsibility?
It's private property coming down to the road, so what I'd have to look into, because our roads are still fall under the, under the highways act, what's, so.
So then I just move my head there, um, by the truck, and then there was another, another spot that comes on. Think about top of my head, that people are merging in, and there's literally no stop sign, and I'm not.
Andrew's the oldest one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, I can tell you that I'm actually in a meeting on Thursday at one thirty. With hi, with Department of Highways Regulatory and Morrison Hurstville, who. Um Department of Highways have under contract, they're reviewing, I think I told you the other meeting about the walkways and the lighting.
Right.
But also is the, they're looking at intersections in town.
Okay.
And how flow off the highway, um talked about the bottleneck here in front of the.
Food.
So how wide that is, and vehicles cross crossing and all kinds of things, so they're looking at that under the. The highway safety lens, and so they're, I said I have a meeting on Thursday, so I'll see what their draft report is, but. Um I will take the, that question about, like, these other intersections to them at the same time.
Okay. Just further to that, um. Uh forgive me, he just said this, but um, weren't they gonna do some work on these crosswalks?
That's all part of the work that's being done now with the street lighting.
Gonna do it still, okay, okay.
All that work is going ahead.
The other intersection is stop R C N P merging onto the road. They don't have a stop sign, you have sign or anything there, and I've just been hit by one of them too.
There's a stop sign at the.
Well, then they're bombastic, because they're not like.
Well, they're the law, so.
All these guys, anyway, um my, I, I don't have a lot, I was asked about the fire um conference, which Cam already addressed, so that was cool, glad to hear that that. I mean, unfortunate, glad, glad it happened, um sorry to hear that it's not gonna be a thing anymore. Um my only thing was, um I was just curious if everybody here gets emails from Shelley when she sends stuff out. Or you, maybe you forward them, like, for the A Y C um responses, like, to the resolutions and stuff. I wasn't sure if everybody here must get those, right?
I forward them.
Anyway, so we're gonna be talking about that, so um. Anina, Cam, myself are going to A Y C and CarMax this weekend, and we're gonna be discussing all of those responses, so if. You guys have looked them over, and if you have any questions, comments, things, whatever that you want us to maybe ask or bring forward, um if you could. Look those over and just get back to me before the weekend, that would be awesome. But.
I would not think. Last one, um when we shut down the pool, uh then another reason, what made me think this is because I was draining pumps and stuff like that. Um so they don't crack, and so valves don't break in the sand, and always seems every spring. We're waiting on some pump or some valve or something that was, that was broken at the pool, can we do our darndest to make sure that we. Drain out whatever needs to get drained, so we're not waiting on parts next spring.
Yeah, so in response to that, um.
If that's what's going on, like.
We hate, we hate that, right, the reason we had problems with the pumps was, that's, we're going back four years ago, or more, with the pump issues. Um that's when Dan Reeds had the contract and they redid it, and. Um Ritandi had wired the pumps wrong, and it was burning the pumps out, so. That issue was put to rest quite a few years ago.
Okay, because I thought it was just a matter of us not draining them or something, and it was just cracking over the winter, and that's why every spring we raise.
Has, they had.
Okay.
Professional electrician had wired the wrong bolts, pumps, and it was trying to control valves.
Gotcha, glad and happy.
Okay, I have a few uh couple housekeeping, cause a couple remarks. Um the antique car rally came through town, and I had a quick chance to talk to the host, he wants, they're planning on making that an annual thing. So I was hoping maybe we could reach out to them and maybe plan something. You know, for their arrival, and maybe, maybe heighten it a little bit to, you know, take advantage of that, because it was pretty cool. And they seem to have some funds available for sorts of things, so, so uh maybe we can make something out of that.
Chris, on that note, I was also thinking that would be cool if they actually did it at the Northern Light Center. There's a big parking space there, I think, or that kind of fun.
Yeah.
A good car show, right?
Yeah, yeah, but the, the host seemed very willing to work with us if we wanted to host something, or you know, be a part of their, their arrival or departure or something.
There's actually a thing put out by parks that said that they would be on display at the rec center, and I feel like.
Didn't happen. It did not happen.
I thought that that was the original intent, but.
Yeah, we had no communication with them, other than them booking the facility for us, and so. And they didn't send out any further, the only reason that we knew about it was that there was a poster up at visitor's center.
So.
I have some contact info, so.
Okay, okay.
Forward it on please.
Yep, and then uh the next one is uh parks funding, so the cemetery and uh Y Lake Trail. Have we got that funding, is there anything in process?
No, um last time I looked, and I haven't looked in maybe three weeks or more. But that funding pot still hadn't been, isn't, hadn't been opened up, due to feds yet, and I believe. Barry, but he's got an email into them asking for updates as the wind, let us know since of window opens.
Okay, and that would just bring about our other, all our parks too.
Yeah, but the cemetery is a whole, something we're dealing with, right?
Yeah, the Y Lake Cemetery, it was kind of all joint, we looked at it all at once, right? Um kind of, we're trying to do it in conjunction with the landscaping and.
Well, the originally, we did that, that we use the same consultant.
Right.
To do that, yes.
Good. So some follow-up on that would be great, um our clerk has um asked me to discuss the potential of having uh. Gro's barbecue. Those dates or discuss that.
It was the, the question, your worship, was, does council uh for, because we. Council decided to dedicate the bench for girl for her service and community, um so the bench is there, we have a. Block on yet, so discussion was, does council want to have a community barbecue, or we just want to have a little dedication. Service uh for staff or open it to the community, could be either way. Uh just the dedication of the bench where the plaque is unveiled.
Mm-hmm.
Um in consultation with Sean to see what he would like, but it's, I'm not sure if you want to do. You know, it's getting to that time of year, do you want to do a barbecue, or just a dedication, or both?
I'd ask the husband. Yeah, maybe reach out to Sean and see what he wants to do. We'll follow along.
Okay.
Tell him to pick a date, and we'll do our best to be there for that.
Yeah.
Sound good, you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the bench is there, it looks very nice, and the trees there, it's. It's in front of the.
Oh, okay, cool.
And sort of, um before she passed, that's where she told me she would like to have.
Oh, nice, that's really nice, thank you.
That's uh, that's great. Um my last piece of housekeeping would be uh next September nineteenth council meeting, I will be available for that meeting, so. Whether or not Deputy Mayor would like to take that on, Cam will be here as well, so we will come up with an agenda the week before, but. If you're willing to take that on, okay.
Okay.
Council's okay with that? Yeah.
Is everybody else gonna be here, though, because we'll need.
September nineteenth.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, councillor Handshire. That's great, uh that's all I have for comments, so now we can move to gallery open forum, thank you so much for sticking around. Through the entirety of our meeting, uh do you have any questions, comments, discussion, who would like to?
We get.
Sorry?
How many do we get?
You should be honest, you're here every day, every meeting you're here.
When you do your meeting there, um I have no idea what a hell of a stage you have. So, you know, we should put that on your agenda, you're gonna tell me what that is, and same with this other. Uh scam, I have no idea, I'm gonna go home and Google it all, of course, but, you know, we should include that in the presentation.
Okay.
Um, my other one was back to Lauren's comment last evening about the legs. Highway there. I think the whole flight thing has, I don't know. It's changed, you know, I think it was set up that it was supposed to be countries of the world. And now we've got, and I know you guys have hard weather, you know, flights were being hard, so. So we were probably plugging up anything we could find, but anyways. Uh there's a town in Watson Lake, like, I don't think it fits, um special interest groups, they don't fit, it should be. Flags of the countries of the world, and that's it. Town in Watson Lake Flight, close to the administration. There, special winter, well, mine's a place to put, but I don't think it goes.
The theme, the theme of what?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And once they get red, and also a multiple flags of some countries, and none of other countries, right? And again, I'm thinking we're grasping anything to define, but, you know, maybe order a couple of countries. Like you have extra, but up based on also part.
Okay. Noted, thank you very much, is there anything else?
That is it.
Okay.
Oh, was there a glitch with the um getting the agenda out today, because I had actually thought one.
Yes, there, there was, well, actually, we sent it out to our normal. Um channel, usually through the chamber, but that's sort of a glitch. But uh the fact was that there was only myself and Caitlin on Friday, and we're struggling to get some package out, period.
So I usually get one from the town, you know, it's on my two different.
Exactly, and, and unfortunately, um it was a perfect storm, because the people that do our website stuff, like Tiffany and Brandy. Were both off, so it just, things lined up and. Keep our heads above the water on Friday, so.
Figure it's something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jess. Jordan?
Hi, George.
Yeah, you and me, come on up.
For those who are old, my trade years. I own a commercial lot at two ten ninth street. This matters in regards to the uh lot stores, mine at least two eight ninth street. Over four years now, the owner of two eight. Something huge, whether the term of commercial property is permitted to rent a lot. Regardless of the scenes, Mr. Ellis is not one of business that justifies until the court. Or does property have townhouse, true before this? The last six months, Mr. Ellis has moved several occupants onto the property, living in the lanes on code. Mr. Ellis's dwellings on code, contrary by law. Mr. Ellis's trailer has been currently attached to a separate building without any town or infirmant or. This individual has moved buildings both on and off the property with moving on and turn. Mr. Ellis has cleared forest as well as developed land, used heavy equipment with no town rule. Mr. Ellis has had four years to make some attempt to meet current regulations regarding living on construction. And asked the way to force bylaw officially procedure in this matter, in his jurisdiction. He stated a stop for order would be issued such as this one. And the occupants ordered to vacate the premises until the registered market met all requirements. Bylaw has been aware of this matter for a while on the spot, and has yet to do a single inspection. Our M L A has been several conversations with town on this matter to. It has been suggested that this matter be brought to council's attention before legal action is taken on grounds of discrimination. As well as a full investigation by the. At this time, town bylaw is in a position of authority regarding the public safety. If she's not willing to do investigations regarding public safety. When she is in a position to lie about doing these investigations on property. This certainly calls for grounds for immediate dismissal. At this time, we ask what councils. I'd like to also add that in a term of purchase. This commercial property, the moment my trailer was loaded off of the truck. Bylaw issued a stop work point. And gave me orders to have the dwelling built to code before I was allowed or permitted to live on. No less than the expected, yes. This is a discriminatory action, this has been allowed to continue for over four years by law on town, that's a. Visit to the property by either town by law or the.
First of all, first of all, just start by saying thanks and bringing, bringing the information forward, and it's the first that I think council's really heard. The descriptions of this, this, this issue. Um lots of the, the majority, I'd say ninety-nine percent of what you presented to us is an administrative issue, right? So we'll definitely, we want to hear what you have to say, take it into consideration, but. To deliver you a response at this very point in time is gonna be hard for us, because we need to definitely. We should take in your information and have a chance to hear what administration has to say, and then make decisions. Just so you're aware, so we're, we're, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay.
Okay.
At this time, we do have collaborative conversations from bylaw stating that she has done investigations several on the spot. We do have video surveillance of no less than three properties on main street, showing the entire street. Her event absolutely no visits by bylaw has been done due to.
When you say we, who's we?
Those who are concerned with misappropriation, this is commercial.
Okay, okay.
Are you able to forward that to, are you able to forward that to Cam?
Or.
The information that you have there? Have you already forwarded that to Cam?
This information has been provided to town.
Like, to town, just Connie, or just like the bylaw officer, or? Thank you.
They don't have any at this time, Jordan, but uh thank you for providing me.
Two eight.
Sorry.
Two eight ninth street.
Two eight ninth street, now this is the, I have two ten.
Yeah.
Uh, this is the lot uh down.
Is there one between you and Martha?
No, this is Martha's.
It's, oh, okay.
Yeah, so before we make any decision, we'll definitely uh inquire with administration and hopefully uh provide you with some sort of response. Thanks for, thanks for sticking it out, thanks for. Patty, you have any questions for uh? Gallery open forum.
A couple. Uh when we talk about the um the public meeting that's, that's gonna get placed down the road. And we talked about, you can't, that one of the things that government is pushing is, as has been referenced. Is this whole idea about, you talk about crime and violence. How we get there, right, and so, and so the idea about um. Called safe supply become an issue, and. Treatment, now. I'm not gonna comment on the state supply sector. Uh but as far as treatment is concerned, perhaps that's one of the topics that the people should be engaged on. And that is what that looks like for them, because they, they'll be told that there are treatment options. Right, there's Jackson Lane, there's maybe Iron degree, but I'm not sure what the story is down there yet. Um but what does it look like for the people of Watson Lake in this area? Know what they want to see, so, and of course, some. Other levels of government have a, have a great deal to, to do with that. Um. I wondered when the next town hall meeting is.
Usually, um.
We can discuss one, but it would be.
Budget.
Yeah, be budget time.
Budget time.
So, I mean, wasn't that the last time, like, one year, is that all? What we're doing?
Hmm, we did one not that long ago at the fire hall. We did a bunch about the cemetery bylaw, we had a lot this year, actually.
It's, it's possible, I just.
But usually January, we have one, uh because we have to pass the, oh, sorry.
We have three town halls this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you're gonna.
I just wondered if perhaps the next town hall meeting, if, but that may, you know, talking next year. Maybe two or three, we'll, we talked about this nuisance bylaw, then perhaps. A question for the public is what did they want their town to look like?
Yeah.
Right, personally, I like to see people be responsible for looking after their cars out to the, out to the. I like to see that, and in other communities, that's a lot. So, but maybe not everybody thinks that way, and so, so it's, it's a discussion, I think, would be, well, we're having. And so, so it's, it's a discussion I think would be while we're having, uh. With those people, those few people that show up to.
The folks.
Um, and, and, and certainly that would, you will talk about direct uh, vehicles and, and you might get some. Other.
Yeah.
Thoughts on that, certainly, dear, but vehicles cleaning on properties is a big problem. Like, like some people just pull out them. So, um, I also wonder if the town has yet been told. What the dollar amount is for the tenders on the lift station and the subdivision development.
That's for you, Cam.
Do you think that's weird?
Yeah.
Well, one spot time we did hear like three million dollars for lift station.
But then we were told it's over budget, has to back to management board.
So, so what's the number? Is it even gonna go in? I mean, maybe it came in as a million, a million dollars. And now nobody's doing it, like, this is all pretty important information to have and, and so I, I just hope you're. Appreciate my favor.
I'll definitely follow. Yeah.
Thanks.
Is that all?
It's never easy. Um. Okay, so if there's nothing else for gallery open forum, thank you Patty for your comments. Um. You German?
I'd like to turn.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor Bruce, all in favor, very.